Pray with me, please. As gracious as having Father, we indeed thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of life. Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight. Be with the board tonight as they make the proper decisions for this community. We indeed thank you for the Lord Jesus Christ. These things I asked in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the agenda.
I might force to fund a new business and to add to the wording of that item to set a public hearing date for purposes of hearing public comment, including but not limited to amending the city of Fairview subdivision regulations to require two signatures to sign final plats. That would give us a chance to add other things to the appropriate...
Do you have a motion?
I so move.
You have a first and a second? All in favor? Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
What would "including but not limited to" mean?
Which it states, the only thing that's being considered is to have two signatures.
Yeah.
If there was something else that we might need to add to that, if there were not, if it would be more than just the two signatures added, then we give it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number three is citizens' comments.
Madam Chairman, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Thank you.
Sure.
Number four is approval of the minutes. 4.1 is from April 3, 2014, special called meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 3.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 4.2, approval of the minutes from the April 8, 2014, regular meeting.
I so move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number five is recommendations. We have none. Number six, bonds. 6.1 is Skirboro Village Performance Bond to cover the road sidewalks and storm drainage, $52,000. The planning commission set the bond on February 12, 2008. The bond expires May 19, 2014.
Madam Chairman, I have a letter from the Pitts' Bank that says that this letter of print will automatically renew on the 14th. I mean, I'm sorry, the 19th of May, it will automatically renew. So I recommend that the planning commission accept this. Accept this renewal is in the same amount as the $52,000 is the same amount.
Do we need a motion since it's been submitted?
Do we need a motion since it's been submitted? Or...
No, not if it's been renewed. I have seen the letter and we will not be needing to call the bond.
Okay.
So it's just for information purposes that you know that it has been renewed.
Is there a new expiration date that we need to worry about there?
No, it expired on the 19th and it says it's going to be automatically renewed on the 19th unless they sent a word to the city or unless they communicated with the city that they were not going to renew. And they had to do that 30 days before the renewal date and they did not do that. So if they tried to get out of that, that would be fraudulent. So I have no problem with it.
So it automatically renews for 12 months?
Yes. Yeah, it states that in the letter.
Okay. Are you on a year-over-year basis?
Okay. Thank you. Number seven is old business. We have none. Number eight, new business. 8.1 is final subdivision plat for Hickory Springs subdivision, map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres, R-20 zoning, Walt and Beverly Toddie owners. Mr. Behan, would you like to read the engineer's report, please?
We have both an engineering report and some staff review comments that will go with this particular item. The first engineering report, section 4-104.2 of the sub regs, require a five-foot wide sidewalks to be installed along the Horn Tavern Road unless the planning commission determines otherwise. Please show the proposed sidewalk on the plat. The second engineering comment is going to be stormwater detention is to be provided for projects in which the post-developed runoff exceeds the pre-developed runoff. Please provide stormwater analysis submittals in accordance with section 4-113.4 of the sub regs in order to effectively determine if stormwater detention is required. And then regarding the staff review comments, one comment there, section 4-111.1 of the sub regs require at least 10% of the subdivision area be reserved for neighborhood recreational uses unless the planning commission determines that this requirement is not practical for the proposed development. If determined not to be practical, a recreation fee may be paid in lieu of the reservation of land per the fee scheduled established by the governing body. And that is all we have for the comments.
Can we not have pictures?
Can we get this put on the overhead?
What is the, what's the fee schedule for the recreational?
That's a good question, Mr. Mangram. To my knowledge, there has not been a fee schedule established by the governing body that this references. Now, I haven't, certainly haven't done exhaustive research of that, but anyone that I've spoken to and then any documents that I've been able to find has no reference to a recreation fee or fee schedule that this references.
Do you work with any other cities or municipalities that has something similar that has a fee schedule?
It's very limited. The requirement of the public land set aside that Fairview has in a minimum of 10% of the developed area is somewhat unique to Fairview, certainly for conventional subdivisions of minor or major category. Generally where you would see the set aside for public lands or public use of recreation lands would be in a planned type development with a mixed use. You might have some single-family, multifamily, and even some light commercial type, almost a community type development in which those types, subdivisions and developments, there are a number of communities that would require some type of set aside for maybe like a greenway or a public playground or even a community swimming pool, something along those lines. But it is a little unique to require that for, certainly for a minor subdivision such as this one and then even for, you know, a major subdivision that's a conventional
I'm not aware of any schedule that has been prepared and presented to the governing body either. And also, I am not familiar with any cities that require, and I'm not saying there's not any, but that require for this type of development. Now, what I would suggest is that until such time as one is prepared and presented, then we can't assess fee. I would also suggest that during the time that this revision is being visited, that one of two things happen. Either a fee schedule be prepared, and it'd be a simple thing to do, that it be prepared and presented to the governing body, which is referenced in here, and that would have to be the Board of Commissioners, for passage and adoption and sent back to be enforced on some type of very objective formula or that that provision be stricken. I mean, it doesn't need to be there and not have a, not have a fee schedule because you can't enforce it.
I agree. And just for clarity, the reason, the comment is drawn from direct language in, actually in your subdivision regulation. So it's not, it's not a comment that's generated just by staff opinion or anything. The language that you see in that comment pertaining to the fee and the fee schedule is directly taken from the current subdivision regulations.
So there is land behind these lots, right? So the 10% can be part of that land?
It could be for now, but it probably eventually, one day, somebody else will own it. So...
And I think, just to hopefully interject some clarity on that, as we, we had a similar situation last month and the discussion that took place last month was generated based on some reserve area.
The size of property. The size of property last month, we decided that since the lots were more than an acre, that there was ample space for the, you know, play area. This is not the same situation. And my question would be, if the land behind this subdivision, is it part of the subdivision? If it is, and we require the 10% to be on that, then it wouldn't be able to be sold because it would be part of that subdivision. Am I correct or not?
Yeah, and that's where, the discussion last month, the possibility was brought up about requiring or allowing some land that was currently in an easement for a septic field to be the public set aside for the recreation area. And that, that's just, that's not feasible. If, and the same occurs with this property that's behind these lots, if you deem it necessary to have 10% set aside, then it has to be platted as such. It can't just, you can't just have the property owner saying, yeah, they can use that for that purpose. It would need to be platted with that purpose and with that note on the plat that it is public land. The issue then you're going to have is who is going to maintain it? And ultimately, somebody still has to own it. And so that would fall probably on a homeowner's association to not only own it but also maintain it. And now you're, you would be moving down the avenue of requiring a homeowner's association for five lots so that that association could then be the owner of this land that's set aside for recreation purposes for these five lots and that would also be responsible for maintaining it. Obviously, the association is made up of the property owners and so then there, they would be, ultimately the costs and of the maintenance and the ownership would fall on their shoulders in addition to whatever the cost of their own property was.
So what you're saying is this needs to be replatted to show that that 10% is a part of this subdivision?
If the planning commission deems that that is applicable in this, in this case, yes.
And that, as a part of your engineering report, this is a requirement of a subdivision to have the 10% set aside for a recreation area?
That's correct, yes. The reference section is, is where, again, that, that section is written verbatim in the comment.
Mr. Todd, do you have any plans of doing a homeowner's association for these five lots and the potential of more lots with the remaining five plus acres?
At this time, it's just five. The remaining five acres may go as one parcel. I don't know that it'll ever get cut up. And no, I wasn't going to have an association.
Well, the requirement of 10% is your option. You don't have to have it. I mean, it's, it's either required or it's like anything else, if you waive it. But also in this instance, since you don't have a fee schedule, you can't give them any other option.
There are no other options without a fee schedule?
Right. Other than you either approve it or you waive it. Because it specifically says, unless the planning commission determines that this requirement is not practical for the proposed development.
And as pointed out, the subdivision last month, each lot was an acre plus, so they had ample room to have recreation on their own area. I don't see this in, as a part of this subdivision, having that 10% that is required.
Have you had conversation with Mr. Todd regarding the retention pond or detention area?
We may have briefly touched on it at the staff review meeting. My suspicions are that, that it won't be required because it won't meet the threshold for increased runoff that the city has in their stormwater regulations. But we just need to make sure that that's the case.
What size homes are going on these lots?
Probably 1,600 feet, thereabouts, give or take.
Yeah, somewhere in there. Okay, thank you.
So has anybody calculated how much 10% would be for this subdivision?
The total acreage of the land that's being divided, the property, the current property as it sits today is a little over eight acres, so you'd be looking at roughly eight tenths of an acre would be the 10%.
My other concern, if, if a detention pond is required, and it's not on this plat today, can we approve this without showing a detention pond if it's required? Because we don't know where it's going to be located at.
Right. I would suggest to you, if you choose to move forward with the approval, that it be contingent upon the stormwater calculations being submitted and that there not being any requirement for a detention pond, assuming that that's what the calculations indicate. If there is one, then, then I would suggest that it would need, the plat would need to come back before you...
For another approval.
Correct, yeah.
My question would be if any of these other lots that are attached to this is developed in the future, what's that going to do to the retention pond requirements?
We would take that into account when those future lots came online.
Even though we're approving this plat, this plat would not be involved in that approval, is that right?
We would take the calculations that were submitted on this one and then also combine that, review that with the new one if there's any additional lots proposed. And then we would see if the two things combined, the two developments combined, would have met that threshold. If they do, then it would be required on the second one.
There's a high spot in the land right there at the back of those lots where it crest over and goes the other way. So whether or not, whatever happens back here is going to go in a different direction anyway. The only thing that can go down back towards the front of the lots is just like from the back of the property line forwards.
The other item on the engineer's reports is the requirement for five-foot sidewalk.
I have two comments. One is on the sidewalks, that a five-foot sidewalk in that area right now kind of would be a sidewalk to nowhere. And the property next to it is quite a few acres that are vacant right now that could in the future add to it, but I believe the city has to maintain sidewalks, don't they? So you'd have a five-foot sidewalk that goes nowhere that has to be maintained. So I would be for just a variance on that. Getting back to the, the land donated for open space, if the city had in place right now the fee schedule, that would be the appropriate route to go with this, I believe, based on the circumstances, how the lots designed. So I would like to see, how long would it take for the DOC to come up with a fee schedule?
At a minimum, it's going to be two and a half, three months because you're going to have to come up with the, with the schedule, make it a part of an ordinance. The ordinance has to pass two readings.
Okay.
So you're looking at probably realistically three months.
Okay.
At the very best. Won't take that long to prepare the ordinance or prepare the schedule, but by the time you get it, get it before the board and then come back for the second reading, you're looking at two and a half, three months.
Okay.
I have two comments. One is either we need to wait on that fee schedule or require the 10%. Second one, if, if there's land that could be developed next to this land and we don't require a sidewalk, who says what's going to happen then? Then what if they have to put a sidewalk in and we didn't require a sidewalk here? So we were almost forced to not require a sidewalk there.
Yeah, and my concern with that, that is so close to where Caldwell Lane could potentially develop later. I'm with you on that as far as down the road, other potential adjoining developments
We're saying the city would be responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk area?
That becomes part of an easement.
Wouldn't it be an easement that the, the property owner would maintain?
No.
No, if they're on public, if they're on public thoroughfare, they become public property and the city would have to maintain them and be responsible for any liability of somebody falling and getting hurt, et cetera.
But it's still the same situation. We're kind of saying, if we don't say sidewalks here and then the next subdivision we require them, then they're never going to be here because we gave a variance. No matter who has to maintain them. It's a subdivision requirement.
No, I think you're absolutely right. I think we got to start somewhere.
I know. We can't just keep giving variances and not know what's going to happen down the road. That would be like not preparing for traffic if we're not requiring somebody, you know, I mean, I just, I don't think it's a good plan.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this as presented with the sidewalks to be added and also contingent upon stormwater calculations. And if, if a detention pond is required, it needs to come back to us for, for final approval. And my motion is going to be to allow a variance on the 10% because I don't think a minor subdivision should be included in that personally, but that's my personal preference. So to clarify my motion, it'll be to approve as presented, a variance on the 10%, but require the sidewalks, require, and requiring the stormwater calculations. And if a detention pond is required, it has to come back here for, for final approval.
A second.
So do we have two seconds?
No.
Did you...
I second the motion.
We have a first and a second on this motion. Is there any more discussion?
Madam Chairman, if I can.
Yes.
Possibly making amendments to that for the variance on the 10%. You can help me with this right here. If, if any other, the reasoning behind it for Mr. Mangram was the size of the subdivision that we're talking about now, if it increases, what are we going to do then? So, you know, if we're going to put something on there, then there's be, so if, if any additional lots are added, then 10% of whatever is land is available is set aside for that. You know, does that correct wording there or do they change it?
You can do that, but it'll have to be done at the time that's presented. I mean, you can't tie this to something in the future because you don't know what's going to be in the future.
Well, if we had two lots, I mean, my thinking, well, but the reason for the variance is because it's a small subdivision.
Right.
If it increases by five more lots, it's not very small anymore or as small anyway.
No, but if it increases, you'll have to come back with a plat for that one. And, and then you, you do what you were going to do at, at that time on that one. Because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. I'm not sure he knows what's going to happen in the future.
I agree with you, but I mean, we're, we're often a variance from what standards are at this time.
Right. But if it comes back two years from now and they're going to add four more lots to it, then you take 10% of what they're doing at that time.
But that's going to be half of what they're doing now.
Exactly.
It would be, it would be 5% of the total subdivision, not 10. Am I right?
Well, you couldn't go back and put it on this plat.
That's, that's the whole point.
That's right. That's my point as well. We can't go back.
No, you can't go back and put it on this plat.
That's my, that's my statement. So if we do five more acre, five more projects back here and we do 10%, it's actually 5% of what we would do for the total.
Well, you can...
If I confuse myself too much, that's your mistake.
No, you could take it up at that time, but you couldn't go back and put it on this.
Exactly. So if we, granted variance now, it's done.
Right.
So if there's, if there's five more houses and we did the 10%, we're only, and it's in this subdivision, it's only going to be half of what the requirement is. Are you with me?
Well, yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay. So I'm trying to figure out a way to, to make it happen without us losing the option of having the 10% in there for an increased size of the subdivision.
The 10% on the total acreage, not just the added acreage?
Right. Because if it's split up and we, once we've done the plat, we, as we've all found out, it's done.
You could, you could put it on the total acreage, but it would have to be added to the, to the new one. You couldn't come back and do it to this one.
Well, I wouldn't mind putting, if there's any other dish, but it's still complicated because it can be divided into an entirely different subdivision and it doesn't even have to be the same subdivision.
Right.
We're just trying to protect this.
Would we be allowed to increase the percentage amount on the next section, per se?
Well, if you put that in there, that's where you'd have to do it because you can't, you can't do it to this one.
So what if we required 5% setback on this right here, set aside?
Well, that's not what your, your regulation says. It says 10%.
Okay. Your regulation says it requires at least 10%.
Right, at least 10%, unless you give a variance. And you can't go less than 10, than 10%.
Okay. Can you go more? Since it says at least...
It says less.
At least 10%.
Yeah, it says at least 10%. Yeah, you could theoretically go more, but you run into some problems then with, with future stuff because you get into things of... stuff because you get into things of questions about arbitrary. Because if it says at least 10% and you stick to 10%, if you want more than 10%, then you need to change what's in here. It puts you in a position you can't defend.
I just, I have, I just, in direction there, I just have a problem with it because of the future possibilities of what we're looking at. And we'd have no control at that point by having a balanced amount of the recreation to 10% on a new subdivision. Because we're going to lose that if we do 10 now. If we come back and say, well, no, we're not going to do 10, we're going to do 20 just so we can make up for that, that's kind of unfair too because if that piece of property changes hands, it's going to be entirely different.
Well, you also get into a situation of you probably won't be dealing with the same, with the same people.
I agree.
You're going to be dealing with the property owners that are up there, and then you get into things where you're taking my property without compensation.
Thank you.
That's unconstitutional.
But so if we're going to do it, then do it now.
Well, it still may be unconstitutional because what you're going.
You're saying it's unconstitutional for us to require the 10%?
No, no. If you put 10% on there, it's going to be platted on this plat.
Okay.
So that when the people buy it, they're going to know where that public property is. Because if you go into a situation of you can't come back and put it on there because then you're taking my property without compensation. So if you're going to, if you're going to require 10%, you're going to have to require it on this plat. It's going to be put on the plat and it's going to be shown where it is before this is ever recorded.
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't on the board that set this 10% in the ordinance. I wished I would have been so I could put some insight into the theory behind this because, I mean, there's a lot of half-acre lots in Fairview. And to me, and I know we had this conversation about the one-acre lots, but when you've got a half-acre lot, you've still got a lot of extra land, especially when it's time out building a 1,600 square foot house. So, you know, he's not even using 10% of the total acreage for the house itself. Now, if you get into a quarter-acre lot and you put a 5,000 square foot house on it, you don't have much room left. So at some point, we need to address that subdivision rig and put some clarification in it to either require that certain zonings don't have to go with this, whether it be R-20 or whatever that doesn't have to comply with that ordinance, or whether it be a definition between minor and major subdivisions. Because it leaves too much gray area that should be clarified somehow, some way.
It also gets you into the question of are you going to require homeowners associations wherever subdivision? Because who's going to maintain this?
Now, Mr. Cantrell, you said that this is a, this is public? It would be a public? So anyone has the opportunity to use this within the city of Fairview or just within?
No, it would be just to that subdivision.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
But still, somebody's going to have to maintain it.
Right.
And that's generally done by homeowners association. So what you're tantamount to doing is going to set a thing where you're going to have to go back and revise your subdivision regulations to require homeowners associations everywhere.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get a point of clarification on this plat. What we're dealing with is the five lots that are called subdivision of Hickory Springs subdivision, okay? Is the property behind it considered part of that or not?
I believe he said that it might be sold. Is that?
Well, that's, that's a valid question. And as Mr. Mang, the point Mr. Mangum brought up, that is one of the items that is unclear as to how we're defining what's the area of land, I'm sorry, we, how the subdivision regulations define what areas included in the actual subdivision. It could be interpreted to mean the entirety of the existing parcel. Technically, the remainder portion of the lot that's being divided is greater than five acres and therefore isn't required by state law, surveying laws, to be shown as an actual numbered lot on this plat. So there could certainly be an interpretation that the area that's being divided is the area encompassed by the five lots that are shown on this plat and would not be inclusive of that rear five and something, five and some change acreage of the remainder. But that's, that's also, again, one of those points of clarification that unfortunately isn't provided in your sub-rigs currently.
So you really can't determine, or my original question was, is that five lots considered a separate subdivision name? What if they came back and developed the rear portion and called it something else?
Yeah, that would certainly be.
So really, it's two parcels, two subdivisions, actually.
Well, at one point of, that may direct you on this, if this plat was approved and then subsequently recorded and the owner went to sell the 5.27 acres, in the deed that would be used to transfer that 5.27 acres, it would not reference a lot number on this subdivision plat. Take that for what it's worth, but from that standpoint, the transfer of that 5.27 acres would not, there wouldn't be a reference to this plat or a lot number on this plat because it's not legally, from a deed reference standpoint, it wouldn't be considered a part of this plat. Now, when each of the individual lots are sold, that deed that correlates to, say, Lot 1, it would have, it would say Lot 1 of subdivision plat.
Just like the one we have.
Correct. I mean, it'd say Lot 1 of Walt Toddy's Horn Tavern Road subdivision, plat book, such-and-such page, such-and-such. And so it would, it would actually reference that lot in that plat book.
What we have to go by right now is our subdivision regulations that exist. We might, would like to see something changed in those, and that can happen at some point. But right now, five-foot sidewalks and 10% of the subdivision is reserved for play area.
We have a motion on the floor, second.
Any more discussion?
He amended the motion to.
Did we ever amend it or just were you looking for a way to potentially amend it?
We're looking for a way to do it. I was just trying to get clarification on it at the time. So technically, as far as I'm concerned, I haven't made an amendment to it at this time. We're voting on his original motion to put a variance on the 10%, McCrick.
Yes.
And to?
To put in the sidewalk.
Put in the sidewalk.
And?
Contingent upon the stormwater review.
Correct, yes. That's the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
No.
I'm not sure that, did you get, could you have a roll call?
Nay. Yes.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Motion passes. 8.2, set a public hearing date for the purpose of hearing public comment on, including but not limited to, amending the City of Fairview subdivision regulations to require two signatures to sign final plats.
We have a motion on that to move forward with.
Yes, sir, and it'll have to be a minimum of 30 days from the time it's put in the paper, which would mean about 40 days. I think Mr. Humber had a suggested date for the board.
We need, it needs to be July, the first date until here will be July 8th. That's our information meeting in July. We don't have 30 days between this meeting and June meeting, so we can pull 30 days and probably more to get it prepared.
I'd like to make a caution that we move it forward to July the 8th meeting to discuss and our take action on a requirement of having two signatures on each and every plat.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we add to that this 10%?
The way that's written, you can add anything to it that comes up. The revision board, if, can add that or, you know, if any one, the staff has something that they want submitted to Mr. Humber and it gets to the board and as long as you have the list that night, because that's the reason that I'd suggested it including but not limited to.
Should we, and I know we've got a committee that several of us is on reviewing some subdivision rigs and it's sort of died off, but could we, could we possibly have a workshop to address some of these issues so we can get some clarification?
That's a discretion of this board. They'd have to, the board would have to set the workshop date.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor, that's not part of that.
But you'd have to vote on your motion first and then, but if you want to set a workshop, that's a discretion of this board.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chairman, if I can at this time, what's fresh on my mind, Mr. Humber, I believe we've had some discussion with the city manager about resetting a date for the workshop for changing, overviewing the codes. Have you, have you got a date set in mind for that yet?
Richard, I do have something to comment about.
Later on, I just want to make sure because part of the reason when the delay was for Mr. Humber to get here and get settled in a little bit since he's going to be over the codes director spot, so it's forthcoming, just to let everybody know. I'm sorry, thank you.
I would, I would like to ask a question. Since we approved sidewalks, does that plat have to be redone and brought back to us now? I didn't ask that, but I would like to know.
If the sidewalks aren't on it?
Because sidewalks aren't on, aren't on it.
You can handle it one of two ways. You can require that to come back or you can require that to be reviewed by Mr. Humber and then also before the secretary is signed to make sure that the secretary would.
I would like to see that come back to this board.
Okay.
You're saying you'd like to see the change plat come back?
I would like to see the plat revised and brought back to us. Okay, number nine is reports for discussion and information. Mr. Humber?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of things. First, first item I have is that there was a one-lot subdivision that was submitted to me of Hall Road, and it's a petition subdivision, and I have a copy of it. The commission would like to take a look and pass it along.
Can you put it on, can you put it on the overhead?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I want you to put it on here. You should have a spot over there. Show them where the spot's at. Is that it? Ah, it's gone.
This has, this is a petition subdivision which according to our regulations can be approved and out. That's what was done. Also, I'm bringing it to your attention because it should be brought to the planning commission and you need to be advised that it was approved. All utilities are in place, roads in place. It only, it's only one lot, so a petition can be, only two lots, can't be more than two lots, so this file is not a definition petition. Any questions about that?
Is that off Cox Pike?
Yes, ma'am.
No questions for me.
Next, back over to the next slide.
Yes, thank you.
The next slide I have is the codes review committee. I would like to, I would like to suggest do a copy of the codes review committee. What I'd like to do is for, to convene that committee as soon as possible, as soon as possible with the members, convenient for the members to meet. And for us to take up several items. I know that the committee's met at one time, I know you talked about, you divided up sort of zoning organs into different areas for each one to take part in that.
We divided into groups and then each group has so many parts of the.
Well, I think that can be an ongoing function, but what I'd like to do is convene the meeting, the committee and consider some specific things because I think if, if we could talk about some specific things, I think that would be the things that I feel like need to be addressed now. And the, one of the things I want to do is to revisit the sign regulations and I'd like to talk about what the sign regulations are. If we can cover that with the committee, I'd like for them to take a look at it, see what we've got. Also, since the sign pertains to people in business and also owners of commercial property, I'd like for the committee to convene a meeting, a public meeting, or at least one or more to consider sign regulations so we can, I really like the way I'd like to approach this with the committee to talk with the people that are affected and let's get their input in on it too. Because I think if we, I'd really like to see a consensus reached by the property owners and all the working areas of commercial, so we're talking about commercial signs. Also, we need to revisit the definitions of, in the subdivision regulations, of a major and a minor subdivision. We need to have clarity there. And then I'll, we can also take up the issue of public open space requirement and subdivision.
Mr. Humber, just to maybe help you a little bit, you have, how far out do you want to try to set that? Yeah, I know you want to get your notification to everybody on the board. If I'm not mistaken, there's nine people on the board. And you'll be stepping in for that, you know?
There are. We can do this last week of May or first week of June.
You're going to have a lot of people on vacation. The schools running around the corner.
Later in June, later about the June meeting?
Schools out next, next week, right?
Yes.
So middle of June.
Yeah, I think that should be over.
At the middle of June.
It's too hot there.
Just a suggestion to you.
That meeting I was going to call the members and see what they.
Well, you've got some of them here now.
Four now.
Yeah. Boy, if y'all have a time, I'll be glad to contact the others if they, if they could be here at that time if you've got a day and time.
I'd have to be looking at a calendar. Do you have anything open? We're talking about June now, do you have anything scheduled for June? I have to look at the dates, first and third, second Tuesday, that thing.
What about before, the next play, if you need?
That'd be the, that'd be this.
That's the eighth, no, I'm sorry, June?
That's what I was fixing to say.
What June, what day is it?
I believe it's the eighth.
The eighth, okay. Well, that's almost, that's going to cut it off of close to what he was referring to about vacations.
Yes, right.
So why don't we try to have it right before, sometime between then and the end of the month? But that's a suggestion there, once again. But that's a suggestion there, once again.
What day?
You pick a date, just let us all know, and...
Okay, I'll let you know.
Take a poll.
We can get a meeting there, so...
You got a date?
June 10th is that second Tuesday. You can do the 17th there.
17th?
17th, June.
Be the third Tuesday.
That's the third Tuesday in the month.
We should go. Want to do it at seven o'clock, five o'clock, this matter?
What was the first number you threw out there? Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, five o'clock.
No.
Yeah, I think we're going to invite business owners. I mean, closer to their quitting time would probably be...
Probably six.
You'd get more attendance that way, probably.
If we're going to do that on that meeting, because at that time, we'll have everybody here, and we can start setting up meetings, but like I said, the sign ordinance is...
We'll probably need with the...
That's my check.
Okay.
That's all I have left, Mr. Humber.
Mr. Hall, city manager, would you like to say anything? You're here at the meeting tonight.
Could I see the platform before the meeting?
I'm about to tackle him getting out of the car. He was hollering my name, so I got out. I made the car the last one, though. Hold it off, you know.
The grid's supposed to be empty, so we need a lot of stuff.
The question for Mr. Hall is, could, could, in theory, the required recreation space 10 percent be a part of the lots themselves? Is that...
Individual lots.
Individual lots.
Individual. I'm going to take care of this, don't worry.
I'd have to go back and look specifically at the language in the subdivision regulations, as I'm not certain that that's what the intent was, but I don't, but I'm not certain that it excludes that as an option either, by, by the language that's actually in the subregs.
But wouldn't that allow for Neighbor A to play on Neighbor B's yard?
Yeah, I mean, in, in theory, they would have, at a minimum, they, it would have to be, there would have to be an easement that encumbers each of the lots that would allow use by the other individuals, I would think, to meet that threshold. But again, there's a lot that's left for interpretation by the planning commission on what's required there.
I think the only way that you could, could allow me to go on someone else's property for the purpose of recreation, it's going to have to be either preserved as one-platted public access area for that subdivision, or there's going to be access easements for everybody, granted, for every lot, to be on everybody else's lot. And then, if I'm one of those people that don't want to keep up my lot, or, you know, I don't mow my grass, or somebody, I can see a lot of problems with it. I mean, I could, I could, I could mow it and keep it within the, the codes regulation, but somebody else doesn't like it because they can't run through the grass well, because mine's four inches long instead of two inches long. But just to be, just have the right to be there, you're going to have to have mutual easements for everybody on there.
Here's, here's the exact paragraph, and this is the only language in the entire subdivision regulations that addresses it. Section 4-111, Open Space Requirements. 4-111.1, Reservation of Land for Recreational Purposes. Areas for parks and playgrounds of reasonable size for neighborhood playgrounds or other recreational uses shall be required. No arbitrary percentage of area shall be insisted upon by the planning commission, but in general, the developer should set aside not less than 10 percent of the area within a residential development for these purposes. Upon a determination by the planning commission that a park of suitable size or location cannot be located in the development, or is otherwise not practical, a recreation fee may be paid in lieu of a reservation of land per the fee schedule established by the governing body. And that is all that there is pertaining to open space reservation requirements.
So, we need to determine a fee, like we do for the tree fund or whatever. Right.
You know, your other, your other problem with that is, is if we stick to this, there's almost no way to do an in-house one-lot subdivision, just like they just approved on Hall Road, because this is so discretionary here, he wouldn't be allowed to do it.
Without any further clarity in the subregs, I, I think it could be applicable to every division of land within the city.
We just got this declared.
That meets, that meets the definition of subdivision, minor or major.
And you, you need to be careful with it when you're, when you're revising this thing. You don't want to get into a situation where the city is managing every subdivision, because you start to get real close to stepping on the fair housing law, and you don't, I can tell you right now, you don't want to go there.
Is there a motion, or is this just open discussion?
No.
Just open discussion. I've got a question on it. You, you got something, Wayne?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Just so I can help confuse this a little bit more. I don't say Castleberry, we maintain part of that subdivision. Does anybody here know how that came about? Is there a organization there, the homeowner association in Castleberry? A couple of y'all live out there, so.
No.
There is not.
I don't have any law.
There used to be one.
There was, we're getting this one.
But I'm reselling back to what Larry just got through saying, is the reason I asked this question in the first place. What responsibility and does the city have for taking care of part of that subdivision only?
Without looking at the documents that created it off the top of my head, sitting right here, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. I didn't think, I can't, so I don't know.
That's an honest, I'd have to look at the documents that maybe someone knows. I don't know what part, what part of the subdivision is the city doing.
It's quite a bit, in a fence area also, am I correct, city manager?
Yes.
And it's, it's...
From what I understand, that's...
From here to the front door, almost.
That may be public right-of-way.
I don't think so.
Or it belongs to the city, that section.
Okay, if it's public right-of-way, if it belongs to the city, then that's the reason.
So, the city can do what they want to with it.
Well, uh...
I'm just curious, I'm just...
I don't know what you mean when, when, what they want to, but...
I just want to, well, you know, we're not going to put outhouses on it, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be funny, but I don't...
In the future, I want us to make sure that we're not in that position to have to maintain that property.
There may, there may have been something at the time, we would have to look at the plat and see if the city actually owns that property there, if it was given to the city for some reason.
I live in Fairview Meadows, but nobody maintains that property over there on the highway.
Well, it may be a different, it may be a different plat. I mean, I don't know, without looking at the plat, how far the city's ownership extends.
I'd just like for us to look at that, and so it doesn't happen in the future, because we don't need to have...
We need to fix that one, don't we?
But what I'd like to see is fix that one, if we, if at all possible.
And there may have been a good reason at the time as to why the city owned that.
It's a lot of maintenance for an individual piece of property that doesn't belong to, you know what I'm trying to say?
Mm-hmm.
We don't service everybody's subdivision, so I, it doesn't make any difference where it's at, I don't care.
But I mean, if there's property there that belongs to the city, then that's the answer.
Can we look into that? Mr. Hall, Wayne can help him out there a little bit.
Could it have once been owned by the homeowner association when it went under?
There was a homeowner's association there at one time.
I know we did.
When it started.
It was, but...
Just like in my subdivision. So, just, I'd just like to take a look at it and see, because I don't want us to be, maintain that, that property forever, because we don't do it everywhere else.
Right.
You want to come on your case?
We can't even come around here, but no.
Mr. Cantrell, your turn.
Oh, I have nothing further, thank you.
Will, your turn.
I have nothing further either.
Mr. Sutton?
I want to apologize for being late tonight. We had a, a function, and I'm going to mention just very shortly, the Boys and Girls Club of Williamson County, which includes all of Williamson County, and the City of Fairview had their annual banquet tonight, which is a major fundraiser. They raised almost $40,000, and that money is divided up equally per child between the two clubs that we have. Fairview participated more this time than we ever have before, and I want to commend everybody that, that did take part in it, for the reason I was late. Also, we had a young, young lady named, her last name is Moore, I'm sorry, it starts with a D, I don't want to mess it up, so, but she was voted the outstanding youth for Middle Tennessee Youth of the Year Award. That's Middle Tennessee, not just Fairview, not just whatever, and she's from Fairview. And that's the second year in a row that Fairview has had the Youth of the Year for Middle Tennessee. That's quite an accomplishment, and I want to thank everybody at the club, the county part of it, Franklin, and especially our group out here, because they do a fantastic job, so support them when you can. Thank you much. That's all I got.
Mr. Magerm?
I'd just like to thank our staff for, for their effort each and every meeting we have. That's it.
Batler?
I know Mr. Humber's been here for a few weeks, but I'd like to welcome him. We're excited to have you.
Me, Han?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Rowe?
I'd like to welcome Mr. Humber. Before we do work with him, I'd like to say something.
I'd like to also welcome Mr. Humber. I had a chance to sit down and talk with him for a while, and I think he sees, you know, some areas that need to be improved on, and some things that he can really, you know, take on and, and make better. We all work together and try to make, you know, the best for this community. I do want to say that, you know, we have subdivision regulations for a reason, and we may not agree with everything, they can be changed, but I think we don't need to look at subdivisions as individual pieces, we need to look at the whole, and try to envision what could, you know, join them in the future when we make decisions, because if we just haphazardly give variances and we don't take into consideration what's going to happen down the road, then, and then we decide to enforce those subdivision regulations on those people, there's going to be gaps, just like we talk about, you know, the zoning, having holes in it. I don't want to see a sidewalk here and then a section where we've already given a variance and it's not there. You know, there's got to be the opportunity for it to connect, and us to look, you know, into the future, and not just the little piece that's going on. You know, green space is important to me, play areas for children, I think that's why that was added, and, you know, I think it's important, and if that, if there's something developed behind it or beside it, and they're required to do that, then, you know, we can either make changes, or we can follow what we have, you know, set in our regulations right now, but I think we need to really be careful about just giving a variance on just one piece of property when we don't, you know, we don't consider what could happen around it. And also, there's a lot of new businesses out here in Fairview, and it's really exciting, what's going on. I just hope that everyone, you know, changes their mindset, and instead of going to neighboring cities and giving them their money, I hope that you just look around and see all the new businesses that are out here that can provide you the same service or, you know, merchandise, and just keep your money in Fairview so that our city prospers from, you know, that. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Humber? Sorry. I'm talking...
Do you have something to say?
I do. I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke on the open space requirements. That's the only section that defines when it's applicable. There are additional sections that follow that to help offer guidelines on what it is to look like and who owns and maintains it. Obviously, we don't, I'm not going to read all of it to you, because it's four pages and such, but basically, the, the ownership options, and it says in here that the first option is that the land be initially offered for dedication to the city, and then the city has the option to either accept that dedication, and then it becomes city property or not. The other options are homeowner association, ownership maintenance, or in the case of condominium, a condo association. So, I, I wanted to offer that clarity. There is some additional descriptions on what the open space is supposed to look like, and, and I'm sure you'll all rush to study those and digest them very thoroughly in the coming days, so. But if you do have any questions on that, let me know, and we can go over that certainly in the work session, if that's what you desire, or a future work session, for that matter.
Do you have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Humber? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned.